You can turn over there.
Yeah, we're pretty crazy.
And you have new time stamps. So David, especially for big companies.
David's gone and no one has replaced him?
David, the column has drawn, and he has not been replaced. And Martin is part of the commissioning, however, he's not being attentive.
Too attentive, yeah.
So in my experience, you guys asking your friends is often a little more successful than me just putting their... Because I have places I have one day that I've left.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Let's, would you call me?
Sure.
Your order. Our first item is approval of tonight's agenda, which has one new item and also updates of the previous meeting. Not another meeting. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I don't do that.
Do you, Hawking, second, Christine, all in favor? We are unanimous. Then I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the previous meeting, February 26th. Ms. Second, Christine, all in favor? Again, we already have it. Item three is public comments, seeing no public, no comments. Um, and then moving to council's referral regarding the... What is it called? A cannabis prohibition bylaw?
Bylaw 455.
Bylaw 455. So maybe you could just give us a little bit about...
Sure. Sure, I have a point a little bit, maybe longer, but we'll see. But just trying to go through some of the federal and provincial legislation, give some of the context for it. So cannabis in marijuana currently is on a Schedule II Controlled Substance, in the Controlled Drugs and Substance Act. But the federal government has said they're proposing this cannabis act, but they say they'll adopt as early as July. And that would legalize recreation possession of cannabis and growing plants for personal use. It would also then allow provinces to license and oversee distribution and sale of cannabis, subject to federal conditions. So provinces can be stricter, but the basic framework is there. Yeah, as early as July. So on a separate sort of permission scheme is medical marijuana, which is governed by Access to Cannabis for Medical Purposes Regulation. And this allows for commercial production of medical marijuana, distributed by mail, and the personal production of medical marijuana. So it doesn't allow for any retail sales of medical marijuana. And then the ALR or the ALC has recently clarified, purchase of medical marijuana on ALR land is a designated farm use. And so it can't actually be prohibited by local governments, so it's just permitted.
Let me ask you a question on that. On the medical marijuana?
Yeah.
That means no sort of retail without prescription, but to say, could a medical, could they sell it at the pharmacy?
No, so that's what, yeah, so that's what, short answer, no. Is that either it's commercially produced and it's sent by mail, if you have a prescription, or you can grow plants for personal production with that prescription. So like you go to Vancouver, and I did a webinar about this, you know, they have several hundred dispensaries. And they sort of talk to the webinars with different communities' approaches to sort of... So some people crack down, because they say, well, we need a business license, and in case you have a business license, it needs to be legal. It's not legal, you can't operate, and we're gonna try to shut you down. And Vancouver went the approach of, there's so many, we can't control this. We're gonna try to put in regulations about size and signage and proximity to different things, and to license some and not others, even though it's, as long as it isn't actually allowed within federal legislation.
Okay.
It's interesting, and just for clarification, that the medical marijuana is still gonna go along in a separate track, eh? And then the other recreational will be on a different track, so they're totally different.
So there's, so this is current?
This is current, yeah.
Okay, and so what happens in July? Nothing happens in July?
No, they stay the same.
So in July, it'll still be the same, like you think, unless they then sort of merge, though?
So no retail sales of medical marijuana?
Yeah, but they would allow retail sales of recreational cannabis. So I'd imagine at some point that the streams are gonna get merged when they sort of figure it out.
Can anyone with ALR land grow a pot?
Yeah, so you would need, but currently, it would be commercial production of medical marijuana. I think you get licensed by Health Canada?
Oh.
I forgot, but you've got licenses, rather than you can't just start growing it. You need to be like in the system to produce it commercially, and then you, yeah, and how it's all done. So BC has announced their retail framework, so non-medical cannabis, recreational cannabis, would be able to be sold and purchased either through privately run retail stores or government operated retail stores and through online sales. So similar to how alcohol is sold, and that is either through government run liquor stores or through private ones. So the BC Liquor Distribution Branch will operate the public retail stores, and the Liquor Control and Licensing Branch will license private stores.
But they said, I read that they won't allow the sale of it in liquor stores.
Correct, so they would be separate. So they would be operated and licensed similar to liquor stores, but they would actually be separate stores. So in February, the BC government released their BC Cannabis Private Retail Licensing Guide, and that's aimed for applicants who want to run private retail stores. So they have some language in it that's interesting for local governments. So they said, for the provincial license, applicants must have the support of the local government in the community where the proposed store would be located. And there's language in the guide that talks about the local government would have to somehow canvass neighbors or canvass residents for approval. And they say this would apply to private or public stores, and would involve, yeah, some level of consultation. But they haven't yet introduced legislation outlining what exactly this would be, or how exactly that process would be.
So what that means, though, is that the provincial government can't just parachute in and open a government shop?
That's what it would say to me. But like I said, what they've released is they've released this guide for the private retail side of it.
Right.
And they say it'll have to have support of the government, and then they've sort of this footnote, it's like, this would apply to private or public.
Uh-huh.
So that's the extent of what I know. But, but yeah, so that would, the way it's worded would say, okay, they can't just open a new store.
At least without, yeah, without consultation and the community supporting it.
Mm-hmm. So then review of our current language bylaw, so it makes no mention of cannabis at all. So legalized retail sale of cannabis would be classified as retail, the use within a building, where goods are offered, kept for sale for public. Same as Bowen doesn't separate out liquor stores. Many communities do, they have retail liquor stores, they're separate. We don't do that, we just say retail use, it's just law, it's retail use. So legalized, we would be permitting cannabis in all commercial areas on Bowen. So council gave direction to staff based on this, to essentially create a blanket prohibition, to say that we don't want to allow it as a blanket use across Bowen until we sort of figure out more what the province is doing, and then consider more like on the site specific rezoning, so.
That's a page of that you've been attending.
Yeah, so that's essentially added to our list of, at the front of the line use bylaw, we have those lists of stuff that says you can't do this on Bowen. So this would allow, or this would be added to the list, which say you can't cultivate, produce, whatever, store, distribute, dispense, trade, sell cannabis, except as a farm use, except for the medical marijuana side, or as expressly and specifically permitted as use in a commercial industrial or...
What does that seem mean?
So that would mean then, if we then went into one of the, if we say we said in the village commercial, we zone or the CD20 zone, I think, which is the pub. And we said, okay, as a use, we would say despite section 3.3.12, you know, the sale of cannabis is a permitted use. So expressly permitted.
And what would happen to make that happen? What would be required to allow that?
Essentially, the owner to apply to rezone.
So it would be a rezon?
So it'd be a rezoning, yeah.
Because it would be a different zone. It would be a zoning specific, which was...
Yeah, so it makes it a big process for someone to go about making, yeah. So it's somewhat cumbersome for him to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So, and so there, there's not an issue with spot zones?
Right.
And BC planning law?
No, I mean, we have, you know, many cities always reply to one or two zones, or, yeah. Yeah, so we would allow individual owners to apply for such specific rezoning. The other note that I have here in discussion is just that we're just trying to monitor provincial regulations. So if they announce their regulations, that actually they're strong enough, that we feel confident, okay, we don't need to do a blanket prohibition. Maybe we're confident that, you know, just the process of applying through the government, the BC system, is enough, that maybe this isn't necessary. Maybe we could just go through their licensing side, but the idea was to start this, this process.
It's probably still a good idea to have, yeah, have some standards on specific zoning stuff.
Yeah, I think that section on local government on page 10 there, sort of what council felt was the right approach to take there, is sort of what Taffino was, and that sort of thing. But a number of communities have taken the approach of passing the initial blanket prohibitions of retail of cannabis, and then state that they will be open to the specific rezonings, like you said. So apparently there's, if you just go and just leave it wide open, you're gonna leave yourself very vulnerable. And then you won't be able to regulate it at all.
That's what the lawyers are saying, or?
I think that's, well, I don't know if it was a legal opinion. I'd imagine there's a legal opinion somewhere along the road, but this is the way some of the other, like Taffino and stuff, is approaching it. And that seems to be what the recommendation is at this point in time.
From?
Province or, I don't know.
Yeah, UCM, I mean, there is, yeah, there's one law firm who's, talks to people too about, you know, the urgency to do this in terms of, I mean, the fear for local governments would be non-conforming uses. So you don't, you don't regulate it first, you get a whole bunch that decide, oh wait, that's too many, but suddenly you can't shut the door, because once the use is there, it's sort of in place. So there's a number of communities that are trying to do this to just...
Slow and easy.
A couple have come out and said, well, we don't want it, we want to ban it now. So they've said, no, you can't have it, because we're not gonna allow it, too bad. And others just say, well, we're gonna ban it for now, but, you know, we're being very clear that we'll let some in, but we're just not quite sure where and when or how many here.
Well, I know why.
We don't know what the rules are.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, and I can see that, it's just, it's all sold in the pub anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
Why, you know, it's, it seems sort of hypocritical to, um, I, and I understand, yeah, because it's, because it's gonna be sold there, it's gonna be sold everywhere, so, um, we're not, it's just, we're just, it's like turning a blind eye.
Yeah, but think of it, think of it as a liquor store. Eh, and who knows if it'll actually develop down those lines? I'm sure there's still gonna be a lot of black market pot out there, but...
Well, there has to be on Bowen, because nothing, you can't do it legally.
Like right now?
Right now, but so it's, nothing's gonna change, it's gonna be...
Well, if Hershey Day has a different approach to this.
Yeah.
They have a retail store starting in July that sells cannabis, then you got a fair amount of...
I know, but like, people have to plan in advance, you know, like...
Well, if you run out, because you're really screwed, yeah.
You, you go to your neighborhood dealer. Like, I, I am being a bit silly, but we're, you know, we're, it's quite hypocritical, because it's all happening anyway, all in, and so...
But they might, you know, we say turn a blind eye to most of it, but once the regulation goes through, and once it gets a little bit, once they have these tools, then maybe they'll get a little bit, I don't know how they could.
It's my understanding that conceptually, the reason that the federal government is considering legalizing marijuana is to reduce or eliminate the black market product, the crimes associated with it. So I'm quite following your...
So, so, but it's not available?
Ultimately, you won't be able to buy pot from the dealer at the pub. You may be able to buy it from your friend Bob, who's got, you know, he's growing his own pot plants, but that's something a little bit different.
Well...
The other thing is you can now, according to the rules, you'd be able to carry around 30 grams. I'm not sure how much that is, is that a fistful, or?
About three joints?
But, but I would imagine, it's like a, you know, like an old bag of pot from the old days, eh? What was that?
A nickel bag?
I think, like a nickel bag, yeah.
What I think it's like, because he has four cannabis plants, produces about 30 grams, I think.
Four cannabis plants, that's quite big.
Yeah, that's a lot, that's very light.
That would clean out your whole cultivation in one...
But what that, what that does is it allows the government to actually go after people who are, you know, you know, black market stuff.
Well, and they could, and they could go after them.
No. Well, they could theoretically, but it's a, it's a, as you say, it's happening everywhere, it's an impossible situation. This makes it a lot more possible to take care of a black market and control it.
I, I think that's the desire, but I don't think it'll take care of the black market at all.
Well, depends what the price point is.
Yeah, and it'll just be, if there's no store near you, then you go to your dealer.
Or you just, you know, like I say, just buy it in Vancouver and bring it over here, then you're still gonna be able to smoke it just about anywhere. You're not gonna be, probably, we haven't got that all out in regulation, but you're probably, it's gonna be the same as the no smoking.
So you can't smoke it anymore, yeah.
Smoke in public, you know, place or anything like that, or...
That's, yeah, municipalities can, so I think...
That's not, that's not the subject of this.
That's not this, no, but we would have a...
You already have a no smoking bylaw.
We have a no smoking bylaw, so we would amend it and say no cannabis as well, and like, I guess it would depend to council. But, you know, like public places, you say municipal hall, you can't smoke, you can't smoke cannabis in it either, or the library, or...
And parks, it's, isn't smoking, I don't know, I don't...
I don't know if we banned smoking in parks or not, I just don't know.
So that's, that's a municipal...
But that municipalities can, so people have, like, people that have, you know, super strict no smoking, so they basically no smoking on the sidewalk or something. They can update it and say, no smoking cigarettes or cannabis.
Pot.
Yeah.
Or vapes, vapors.
Yeah.
Vapes?
But I mean, I would imagine, like, you think on Bowen, we have two liquor stores, right? And see what they think, what we have. Or I guess we have a liquor store enough, go to Windsor or whatever, but, you know, when you see a similar number of... I don't think anybody really knows what the market is for legalized, licensed, regulated cannabis, but...
So we know there's been one, one person in marijuana is interested in having a retailer. Has it been any other feedback in the other direction? Like, you know, either bombs up in arms, or like people calling you saying, don't let anybody open a pot shop on Bowen?
Nobody's called me like in my work capacity. I heard from people after it. More said, yeah, why can't people just buy it on the counter like they do now, and they don't have to see it, like a quest of you? I heard from people, but...
And I think that's what's gonna happen, yeah.
Could well happen, yeah. Because everybody's allowed that, well, four plants isn't gonna get you very far, is it?
No, but Howard, you have four plants here and four plants there, that's gonna be very...
You got this all planned out.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I, well, I, yeah, so I have friends that come up to visit me, they decided they, I don't know, they rushed, caught the ferry, didn't have any weed. So they went into the pub and said, we're staying with a friend with my name, Yay, on the island. And, and, you know, where can we get weed? Because my name gave them, you know, so, that was everywhere. So they, so they arrived, and they were all happy, and because...
And stayed happy.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, but it, like, and so what I'm just thinking, that if it's so open, then it, that, you know, some...
Who knows what's gonna happen?
Yeah, like...
That's, that's the interesting thing.
It's not, it's very well available.
Yeah, and it'll just be more of them.
Available, yeah. And so, I guess, and that's one way of saying, we're not gonna legalize it until we see what everyone else is doing, and just let the status quo go along. And that's really what we're doing.
Oh, except for letting him apply.
Yes, but then he's gonna get turned down, and...
Not necessarily.
I would think so.
I don't, you know, I don't think...
My assumption is he, you know...
If anybody was gonna open a store on Bowen, he's probably the guy that should do it.
Yeah, well, that's...
Yeah, I see more... Because you could get some real...
You know, he's...
Retributes in there.
Yeah, I think part of the rezoning process would be essentially for people to present, you know, like their business plan to council, and how they intend to run it and everything, and then...
Does Eddie have any ALR land?
Yes. Put their trucks on it.
Yeah, knock it with the racks.
Yeah, that's right. Finally get a move, eh?
Is that why the province hasn't appeared any guidelines to how the retail operations will occur?
They have that guide for licensing, but they haven't released anything since then, since that February release.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm curious, because I don't like the, like, we get, like, if it's gonna be referred, similar to how, like, docs get referred to us, and we can say, well, no, it doesn't, experience I've had is, you know, we'll say, well, no, it doesn't fit within the setbacks or whatever, it's too close. And then it gets approved, anyway, subject to getting our permission, or... So I don't know if it'll be like that, or it'll be more stricter, and it'll, you know, you'll need a positive thing of support from the local government or something. It'd be nice to have the details on that, so exactly what their process is gonna be. Or then we would just tell them, well, we're doing a rezoning, and when we're done the rezoning, we'll tell you. And then I'll told you, we'll do a full consultation, you'll know that it's, sort of council approves of it, or not.
Yeah, like you say, much like the docs, anywhere, the docs are approved by the province, but they refer them, they refer them to us, and we have to make sure that everything's in order.
So I'm happy with this, do we, you don't have a motion for us, or we just, we're the speaking to the proposed amendment that you have on page 11?
Yeah, so I just looked for the, yeah, I guess, APC supports by law 455, or...
So, yeah, do I, sorry, do you have anything more you might add to that discussion?
Nope, not if you don't have anything else.
I think it's pretty clear.
I'm happy to move the APC supports by law 455, 2018. I mean, I just tried to...
I'm sorry.
As presented on whatever page it's on.
It will be...
Not Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday, six, Sunday is six.
I'll second it, I hope.
All right, and further discussion, all intended.
I don't know, I, I just wanted them to not unduly prevent the, council.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, and that's, that's the assumption, that's the strategy.
But it doesn't say undue, like, it just, like, it's 300 meters from the school, probably.
Well, we would consent our distances.
And beaches, another one is beaches, eh? Thousand feet from beach, in other words, it couldn't be anywhere in the school.
Yeah, so that's, like, there's some, I just would like, I think that we need to just, or I would like to say, and we don't need to, but I would like to say that it's sort of not unduly restrictive, you know, of rezoning, so that it's impossible, because, and maybe you could do it up at Artisan, but not down here, because you're far enough away, but that's, doesn't really make sense.
Do you want to propose that as a second motion?
So I have that, I have that supports, you haven't gone on the first one yet?
Well, we were in the process, and we, during the vote, we had a question.
So that supports by the number 455 as presented, it's, you know, 16th meeting with the following comment.
Okay.
That, yeah, that council not apply unduly restrictions to, is that what?
Unduly restrictive.
Unduly restrict, uh...
Commercial.
Conditions?
Yeah, under, so, conditions, just because I just think of the school, the beach, the...
Yeah.
Conditions to what, location?
To commercial...
To allow commercial...
Location or process?
Well, both, yes, both.
Okay. Council not apply duly restrictive conditions to commercial applications?
To, yeah, to, like, future, or something.
Future application, EG, location, or...
Process.
Yeah, process. So that it can happen, or could.
How does that sound now?
On the comment, council not apply unduly restrictive conditions to future commercial applications, for example, location and process. Including but not excluding, or not...
Including but not excluding.
Including but not limited to?
Sure.
What, including but not limited to?
So we're gonna just treat it as a friendly amendment?
Sure, I would say, I'm happy.
Well, and we probably oughta re-vote, because, do you wanna vote for it?
Okay, I'll vote for it, or I'll...
Okay.
So we are, we are all in favor of that one?
All in favor, unanimous.
Excellent.
We're done at dinner?
There's a choice?
So there's just, the last, last part, the last part is regarding the joint mayor's standing committee on community lands, and APC's invitation to that meeting, which Dennis and Christine are there, and you were, other country...
3:40, over the next... Like, in New York, volunteer?
Right, I saw that, in, yeah.
Yeah. Of course, not here.
Whether you're, you know, out in the country, out in the country. We got a job for you.
So we've had one meeting? Well, we had one meeting before I returned, but then we had one meeting, I...
That's right, we had, we had a meeting last week.
Last week, yeah.
Yeah, where we met with the Chris Corg and... And talked about, provided a little more clarity in the discussion on topics, and how we were going to address those issues. And Maureen's done an extraordinarily good job of keeping us all on track and organizing timelines and to do everything, so...
Was John F. Duff, maybe?
Yes.
John Reed, yeah.
And Edward Lockman as well, is gonna be working with that.
So, because the, that, initially, the first meeting, there was a question from the mayor about whether the APC would be taking kind of a leadership role with regard to the community lands. And we sort of steered our way through that and recognized that the process would be somewhat different. Is the process, my understanding for that first meeting was the process was actually going to be initiated by having a public open house, which seemed a little bit like it needed to be some, that probably worked out first.
Yes, and, and the way it's sort of shaking out is that there's gonna be a series of walking tours of the land, of the plant, of the lots, three lots. First one, first one is lot one, is coming Thursday and Sunday, and two. But evidently there'll be others. And anyway, there's gonna be, these will be sort of ongoing up until the time, which will be in early June, I guess, June 9th, then. So, but because of the limitation dealing with, being able to deal with so many people in a venue, we're doing it at Kate's Hill, at Kate's Chapel, we're looking at having to probably limit to six, three people, possibly.
Is it the proposed sort of sketch?
Yeah, the sort of charrette thing. And so we've been talking about how we organize that to focus the attention on, on the issues. The idea, the overall idea is that we would come up with not a development plan, because there's a big danger in that, because you look back five or 10 years, and we have a whole different idea about what should happen in the lands. And it's all gonna be single family back then. Sell it off, single family, well, now we know, we can, we can probably almost get all the money back to pay for the land just for the sale of this one property at Seers Lane, if, of course, it gets sold. So then we start to say, okay, well, what do we do with this as a resource? And there's, the first thing we want to do is take a look on day one, first hear all the people and issues laid out. Have a variety of people come in and talk about it in five to 10 minute, seven, more like five minute segments, you know, such as affordable housing, and, you know, BC housing, and... Set more like five minute segments, you know, such as affordable housing and, uh, you know, B C housing and. Even in light industrial. So we'll. Line up that, sort of give all the issues people are talking about, concerned about out on the table. And then we will look at, go sit down at tables and. Each, each table will, they'll have a lot they'll look at in detail with background maps and stuff. And we'll look at developability of it and its location. And relationship with the code room, school and everything, and come up with a range of uses that would, could be used, could be appropriate there. Maybe even look at development intentions that might be possible. Uh, so we pull all that together, number of tables, you know, some different tables, also addressing the same property. And then day two. We'll sit down and say, okay, uh, every, every table takes that information and saying, okay. What should we do first? You know, what, what are our overall goals? And sort of looking at, uh, uh, within all these properties. Okay, well, we know that this property up there is good for, it's flat enough that we could do multifamily and all that kind of stuff. That's really not so appropriate up there, something else might be more appropriate there than you're gonna look down here. So we start to then arrange and sort of prioritize in there. So, uh. Taking then, of course, at the end of each day, each table presents their conclusions. And then that will be storybooked and will come up with sort of a narrative or stories about, you know, what, where are the convergences and, and all this kind of thing. And that's sort of the product, it's, it's to get, it's to get the community. Engaged, hear from a broad spectrum of the community and give council guidance on this council or the next. On what to actually do. And so to that end, the council has sort of backed away from proceeding with the rezoning. Let's say we're looking at first. Right?
Um, so lot two is scheduled to come back to council, the second meeting today?
Uh, I thought, I thought they were not going to take any further action until after. After the charrette, no?
No, so I've been directed as coming back the second meeting today.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, one, one question is how, how is, how are you guys gonna get a broad section?
Well.
And not just the local ones?
So we started, I mean, they did was one, it's like by. By invitation, and so when we started, it was brainstorm list of almost, it was like, I think we started, it was like, okay, neighbors, neighboring groups, um. Even like, still internal, but like chairs of committees or or somebody.
Oh, good, so you do have a process, it's not just to.
And, yeah, and then I forget, we came with a list of like all the different groups on the one. And I forget exactly, no, we brainstormed that list and had the list going, but it's like run out of sixty people, it's loaded up pretty quick. I mean, I hope we're still having room left where it was sort of then it's advertising, like if we had. Like, I mean, we actually invite seventy people and figure that, you know.
Yeah.
If seventy people say yes, sixty then will show up on the day type thing, but, but having a slot left to where it's advertised and it says, if you wanna come. Like, apply and tell us why you, why you care passionately about community lands or something, I know there's some way actually we through it, but, but yeah, exactly, because if you say, for sixty people, sign up, come, right, you're gonna. Yeah, not, not get all.
We wanna make sure that people do the walking tours, they come, I mean, they don't just sort of show up and sort of thinking, no. The land, you, you really won't if you haven't climbed around it and really taken a good look at all the parcels. So that's, that's, that's something that we're trying to encourage as a stand, minimum standard.
Is there a goal here to get to a place where. A professional land planner will take on these parcels or?
No, not, not related to this at all, this is. This is, this is just to make sure that we have a broad community involvement and, and having, and.
Yeah.
Get, getting the information together for council to use as a basis for decision making.
And and the product will be more rather than a land use plan, it will be more the range of principles, what kind of principles should we be following in terms of. The what, the when, and the how.
Okay. So it's more sort of a guiding document to come out of this?
Yeah.
Cause that's, yeah, cause the, the other, at the meeting that I attended, my feeling was that there was a wish to. Have the A P C act as planners on behalf of the municipality and provide some kind of direction to the process that way. I didn't feel we were really qualified to do that.
We didn't hear that at the last meeting.
No. I think it's probably like expansion to it, but it was first talked about, it was talked about just looking at lot two and looking at specific like site. Issues in terms of access, in terms of, you know, it's quite a narrow set, how is it gonna get developed and stuff like that? And that was when they first got, council was first talking about sort of doing. Community lands workshop, we're thinking about like more site planning for lot two, and then it grew to say, okay, don't we need to look at all? We need to look at lots one, two, and three, and doing that, we need to look more broadly, it's sort of, as, as the principles of it. Community vision for it more than the like. Yeah, the super site specific stuff.
Yeah.
Have people been invited yet? Have they been invited yet?
No.
So it's on Thursday, the walking tour?
Well, uh, it was advertised in, in the municipal website.
Also, the walking tour is open?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, all these walking tours are open to everybody in the community.
So we scheduled two walk tours of lot one and more, I mean, that's probably, that's partly associated with like the rezoning side of it, and that's because Murray's going away. So let's start with Murray before he's gone, and then thinking that before the shred is due, I think, ninth and tenth or whatever that weekend is. And especially, you know, like if lots of people come to these two, then we'll do more of lot one, but also before the charrette, doing specific ones, saying, if you're coming, we're gonna do tours, you know, the week or two beforehand.
Yeah, I, I think if, you know, when, when we send out the invitations, we need to say, and the, the requests for people who are interested. We need to say they, you need to attend. Have a tour on every, um, every lot.
It's a risky heck of a commitment, I mean, the.
Day and a half, basically.
A day and a half of a weekend and a, a few hours.
Walking tour, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true, so, uh, that's gonna limit the number of people who wanna do it, but it also makes sure we get a good cross section. Well, I think it's important, there's been a lot of pushback from the community about the community lands and what's going on, and, you know, they don't like obviously the direction that they. Community lands group has gone long, so bring them in, and I hope they're interested, and I hope they have, there's some good feedback there. So we can move ahead with it. I mean, we were just trying to do a pretty high level thing, just trying to. Sort of. Just compartmentalize different pieces, you know, try to move it forward, I mean, it's not set in stone, I mean, it can be changed anytime. I don't know why everybody thought that, oh, we can't do that because it's, no, we don't wanna do that there. Down here, yeah, it's changing. But anyway, get the public in there and see what they come up with, and then we'll take it from there.
Is there a plan for some kind of facility for the charrette meeting?
Yes, yes, yeah, well, Chris Corrigan has been selected, asked to be a facilitator, he's agreed, and we're just working on that as well.
Yeah, oh, good. Excellent.
But there'll be a lot more, I mean, when you think, okay, sixty people, um, you know, maybe ten tables, you really need a facilitator for tables, we talked about. How are you gonna find ten facilitators? And there was a suggestion, well, we should, council members, they, and then, no, no, they, they can be there, but they have to be. You know, on low profile in a sense, um, rather than being aggressive or, you know, owning a table in any way. But yeah, we've got quite a bit of work ahead of us to find sixty people who have got that much time and, and.
That interest is engaged in it, yeah.
And when is the, um. There's a series of housing talks that are going to be.
They're sort of ongoing.
They're ongoing.
Yeah, yeah, we've had, we had one, um, and there's three more scheduled, I think.
We had, yeah, we had to have secondary suites workshop.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago.
That's right.
Me and Greg Corney came, um, I know she's got one where the, the mayor of Tofino is coming to talk about.
Oh, that would be good.
Redhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can remember.
Probably dealt with Airbnb. Those are all videoed, right? I guess it would be nice that could the link to videos, a link to the videos be sent to the A P C?
Okay.
Related to. Sorry.
Or is that. Otherwise, it's sort of like looking for a needle in the haystack, I mean, a small stuff.
So related to this discussion, um. I've received a couple of emails from Don Youngson about, um. What Tofino again has been doing in relation to housing and their initiatives. And they, rather than taking this particular approach, um, and we could maybe do both, but they, um. They have a questionnaire, which has gone up to everyone in the community with, and it's. I didn't go through it in a lot of detail, but it talks about different housing types, related costs, related, you know, potential. Cost of rent and so on, fairly detailed, and it's pretty useful information, and I think that's something. That, I think it goes a little bit to a couple of things that I was saying at, at the meeting that I attended, uh, because I'm interested in typology question. And. A lot of this, a lot of discussion around affordable housing seems to, seems to be stuck in a place where. It's gotta be a detached house, that's what housing is. If it's smaller, that'll make it affordable, and it's just simply not true. So there needs to be some openness to other kinds of typology, to apartments, to attached housing, because that's where the economies actually work.
Agreed, yeah.
So, so, I don't know, I mean, I think that's, if people are not aware of this, um. Questionnaire that's come out of, you know, we, something we should get around everyone.
Yeah, we're gonna have to change our thought process, I mean, like you say, apartments are the way to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Put up a fourteen unit apartment, that's gonna, you know, house the people for the service industry.
Or maybe, you know, smaller apartments, but, you know, but there's no question, um.
But those, those numbers, um. They're not widely available, like, and I think there's a lot of people that don't get the numbers, so it's more like you have to do an education and then ask. And that's because it's really, people can't believe how much building costs and. And then you, oh, and then everybody can have a tiny house, well, what about the land? Like, it's just like people don't get.
The problem with the tiny house idea is it takes four hundred dollars a square foot kind of typology.
I know.
It makes it five hundred dollars a square foot, because it's more expensive.
What they see is what's on H T V, and for the, for most people, that's all they, that's their education process, so they feel they're very educated in this.
Right.
And they really, so they're more dangerous than they were before they knew, knew numbers. But I think, you know, so that, that kind of education process before you ask them the question, I think it's really, um.
That's why I bring it up, because I thought the, the notion of having a widely distributed questionnaire that had a lot of information in it. Uh, so it's both a teaching aid and, and a question that's soliciting kind of comments about.
Now we told you this, what do you think?
Yeah, exactly. I thought it was quite interesting, and perhaps something that should occur prior to something like two day charrette, which is a big commitment for a lot of people. You know, whether if, if better, if better information's available out there and it's the same information that everyone's getting, it's, it levels the playing field a little bit.
Well, I'm not sure that it's necessarily before I had this type of charrette, because we're not getting into the economics. Of, of housing and. And all, were you suggesting that?
Well, I don't think you can, I don't think you tease apart the economics of the economics and the typology.
Economics are gonna be the driver of what happens, it's not, um, or it should be more of a driver of what happens, not what everybody just dreams of happening.
Well, well, there's, there's the whole, it's, it's not a simple topic, and every project you put together is different. So, uh, that's why, and, I mean, the, you need to, you need to identify what, what you need to create. And then you go about, well, how do I get the land for free, and how do I get the thing built for less money? And how do we even use cheaper fixtures and finishing materials, and all these kinds of things build up to get to that price level. But it's just not, it's just not something that. Happens overnight. Happens overnight, and you, you can put the elements on a blackboard and say, here are the variables. Yeah. Uh, and, uh, we know that if you build a typical home now, it's, it's gonna be X dollars a square foot. And even if you get free land, that's way more than anybody can afford, so how do we go about getting it funded?
They, they, people, most of the people that are getting invited are not gonna know that. So I think, you know, some basic piece of information, and that, you know, it's, it's three hundred dollars a square foot if you build a, a detached house, it's. Two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot if you build a condo or whatever, you know, like a, um, of it.
Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying, because I, I get to the typology question, and if you just ask people, what would you like to see it? Well, who knows what will come up, but, but the economics.
But you get.
Drive the typology.
It's refreshing, because you gotta be able, everybody's talking about affordable housing and rental, purpose-built rental housing. There is no such thing right now as purpose-built rental housing unless the land is free and it's subsidized.
Yeah.
So unless you've got B C housing involved or something like that, well, not gonna happen. B C housing will be invited to present. Yeah. An element, and, and so I, I think that is a good comment we need to make, we, and we talked about economics as, as being a key issue. And so, and as well as time, you know, put a timeframe, look at, you know, now versus in the future. So, uh, uh, these, these kinds of refinements in terms of who we get to speak and, and, and how we sort of focus their comments. Because we can't have everybody giving a twenty or thirty minute lecture, we've got, we gotta keep it down.
Well, you can have a piece of paper, like some simple stuff, if you want to have five hundred dollars a month, um, rent, then. Uh, you consider that affordable, then your unit has to only cost, um, seventy-five thousand dollars. Because otherwise, it's not gonna happen, and that seventy-five, you know, or I, I may be the number.
Which is two hundred square feet.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think that, that is, that, that. Most people are not knowledgeable enough to have done that backwards math to understand the realities of it. And, and I think that, that helping them to understand that, they still might go, well, then we should get everything for free and the government should give it to us. But at least they know that, okay, then that has to be subsidized by ninety percent. Or, because I think, I think it's just, it's very hard for people to, to grasp that.
So this, um, housing survey was put together by, um.
I sent you as a link.
Uh, did you? Um, so there are two groups in Tofino, the Tofino Housing Corporation and Tofino Bible Society, or Bible Fellowship. Uh, and both groups were planning on building some housing, and they put together the survey because they wanted to find out what kind of housing people wanted. The, the Bible Fellowship group are building twenty units and Tofino Housing Corporation is planning on developing thirty-five to fifty units. With a mix of affordable rental, attainable rental, and attainable homeownership permits. And then they describe in some detail, um. Figure what those things will look like. So you can actually see the, um. So, you can actually see the, um, I mean, for instance, you can see the townhouses, the different townhouse sizes, uh, cost per square foot. That's, and it's quite detailed. It's worth having, having the customer, it's worth, definitely worth having a look at.
So, still, topography doesn't lend itself to that sort of thing. If you're, if you're building on the prairies, you know, you can do that. You can have your trailer parks, you can have your manufactured homes and all the rest of it. Here, it's, you know, the cost is prohibitive.
Well, that's the other piece of what typology is about, working out. So, what works on sloping terrain is narrow buildings.
Yes.
You know, so, narrow, and narrow stepping buildings will also work on that country.
But certainly more, more expensive than building boxes.
Larger footprint and more sharing is the land in a steep, sloping side.
Well, it, it certainly is. It's certainly more expensive than it is in Surrey or somewhere like that. And that's why I fault some of those, those costs that they come up with in the stepco.
Stepco is ridiculous.
Well, it's, the prices are based on Surrey prices of two hundred dollars a square foot.
But anyway, I just encourage some, some education. It's not, these are the right numbers, but this is an array of numbers for you to put into your head so that you understand what...
I think it'd be good to have a preamble at the beginning of this thing and just have somebody go over very rudimentary realities. Otherwise, this thing's just gonna spin around in circles forever.
Well, I think John Reed is quite knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes.
He's a pro, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
And he's developed more than one kind of typology.
Yeah.
So, he may be the person to give a bit of an overview. Certainly, when, when this conversation came up at our meeting with Mayor and others, John was, I was saying, if affordability really does go down to multiple years, you know, during the... He was totally agree with that. It's just...
And that's the only way you can do it, is you gotta have your market housing at the top to subsidize them. Stuff at the bottom, that's, that's a reality. But, you know, his development, which is apparently gonna go ahead now, which is great, but he's gotta have done all those numbers. Because he's got all kinds of housing in there, and so he should have the numbers, pretty much.
Yeah, that's a good point. He should have those numbers.
Should I do an actifying or something there?
John?
You guys are.
Yeah, we're on it, maybe something like that. I thought, interesting terms, affordable and attainable.
Yeah, yeah.
Were those each?
Yeah, I mean, I, the whole idea of affordable housing, people have all kinds of different contexts of what that means.
Affordable to who?
Yeah, affordable to who. Obviously, we want things that are affordable to people who have very little means.
Yes.
And that's something that is going to be subsidized in some way and all kinds of things like that. But there are other things where, you know, just a normal person with a normal job, young person, has a heck of a time buying anything on Bowen Island, but, you know...
Absolutely, yeah.
You, you needed an, an array of sorts of types of homes to make it. And attainable, I, I guess I thought the most likely thing is affordable means it's getting into the, where it's really very low cost. And attainable perhaps means something more like that all kinds of people in different wage classes will be able to get a home. I have no idea if that's what that ma- means, but it's certainly just...
It was a great term. I'd, I would be interested to see what the definition is.
So, they have a note that says, "Monthly rental prices and purchase prices are illustrative only and will be more firmly established through more detailed design, project planning, and fundraising. If suggested prices are not attainable or affordable, please let us know." So, they've, they've set these thresholds and they've said, and they, so they say, for instance, uh, this is a condo, I guess. And they said, "A three-bedroom, two-bath, eight hundred and seventy square foot unit" would be affordable rental at eight hundred and seventy dollars a month, attainable rental at thirteen fifty a month, and attainable ownership at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, two hundred and sixty thousand?
Very reasonable, okay. Pretty damn reasonable, yeah.
That's allowable.
So, yeah, but that's an multi-unit building.
Yeah.
And that's the point.
Okay, yeah.
But you're not gonna get that in a single family.
And they're, and, and the buildings that they have been designed to, to some degree are, uh, they're quite basic. You know, and that's part of the...
That's the reality.
Yeah, it has to be.
So, yeah. And I think, I think that's kind of, because housing will be a big part, Dennis, of that conversation. It's bound to be. I think it's important to consider typologies. I think the other thing is, is about how it's being delivered and what, what's the municipality's role with the land? Are they selling land to developers to build on? Are they leasing land so they can, they can continue to have ownership and generate some, some income from the ownership of the land? I think these are, you know, these are important questions. And irrespective of whether it's housing or some other, you know, if they're, if they're, whatever, those are being called, these mini-industrial things.
Light industrial?
Light industrial, I mean...
Work and lift.
You know, I worry about the whole thing from the perspective that you was writing, is it the complexity of the different ways that land can be brought into the equation? Whether it's sold, whether it's leased over time, whether that's, you get it to a developer inexpensively, asking them to do a whole bunch of different things, or what? Or whether they, yeah, there are just so many options. And for someone like me, who, not a developer, I'm not a, you know, land lease expert, just a normal average person who sort of reads the newspapers.
Absolutely.
I don't know what works best.
Right.
You know, I mean, John Reed will have some ideas, and some other developers will have other ideas.
Well, there really needs to be sort of a focused effort to, to crack that nut. Because it, it's the elephant in the room.
Yeah.
And, but you can't, you can't easily resolve it. I mean, it's, so, I don't mean, I don't think we can just sort of say, well, uh, let's wait until we can get this thing under control and then approach it. I think we need to...
But you, you ask different, if you wanted the answer to lease versus sale and all that kind of stuff, you're gonna ask a different group of people. What I think is, is, what I think you're trying to do, or I hope you're trying to do, is what you want is a broad group of people to give you some ideas. Because what they, they tell you about the community lands is also probably what they want, to have rezoning on other people's lands as well. Like, they're telling you what they think needs to be on the island. They don't know how to get there, maybe. They need to have some information so that they don't come up and say, well, everybody needs to have single-family houses and, and it needs to be affordable. Like, they need to have some sort of basic, I think. But I, but I don't, I think, the thing, you, you need to walk before you run, would be my view. And so, therefore, what are the kind of things that you think we want to have on the community lands? That's gonna give you a whole bunch of feedback. And then you go into how do we get there? And it's not that I don't think that that kind of stuff's important. I just think that, that if you invite the people to get a broad perspective, you're gonna have, you know, two out of sixty that have a clue. And the rest are about the, the financial and, you know, how, how do you keep the municipality whole?
Some of this stuff is philosophical too, right? I mean, it's kind of like South Falls Creek is a, is a technical example of a whole neighborhood which is built largely of co-op housing. And, um, and co-op housing works for a lot of people in a, in a, you know, in a really positive way. And it's built almost exclusively on land that's leased to the city of Vancouver. So...
Again, a totally different model, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, so it's a different kind of housing and it's a different kind of ownership. We're not non-ownership. You know, and that turned around, you know, thirty years or whatever it is, forty years after its inception, to be not a very, a very good thing for the city. And so, they decided they were gonna redo the leases, and that's, that's proved to be a bit of a challenge. Yeah, a lot of people love their co-op, so the Falls Creek were super challenging, but it's huge banks in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were living in Falls Creek just before we left here. It was like, we could see it happening around us, and that things were gonna skyrocket. And I mean, so there's, yeah, a process of, I guess, I, and I guess you're saying, and this again, kind of goes to my, my other question about, because I believe that there are people out there who have all that knowledge in one suitcase. What typologies are, what land ownership options there are, what works best in a rural setting better than in a, you know, urban setting. And, you know, that's where I think planners come into the, into the picture here. That's why I'm wondering why we're not going there to get that expertise. It's not that there's lots of expertise, there are different kinds in the community, but it, it tends to be, um, it's not focused. You know, I think people have lots of good ideas, but they're, they may not be super well-informed. And I, my, I'm just talking, but I, my sense is that we have a little bit sort of a more global picture that's being crafted by someone who has the skills and can explain why he would do that. And then you take that to a public forum like a Sherret or something even broader, public openness. That, to me, is a process that seems to make, would make more sense, but...
Well, and I said, well, I said this at the time, I, I think there has to be some structure, quite a bit of structure going into that Sherret. I think if you leave it wide open, like Kerr says, if you leave this thing wide open, you're gonna just get a whole diverse bunch of ideas and you're gonna end up with a whole bunch of yurts and castles and a whole bunch of other shit that you don't really need. So, you, you have to focus the group and they, I think, you know, the education is a huge part of it.
Well, yeah, and, and that's why it's structured the way it is in terms of presentations.
Yeah.
But also, a lot of work needs to go into how, how do we manage the tables and, and all that. Record-keeping and also, you know, the questions, keep, you know, maybe give them a list of questions or something. Give them a sort of an agenda to work through, you know. How, and, and do we give them pieces, development pieces?
Yeah.
Apartments, you know, single-family, industrial, you know, and to play with. So, that, because most people are not even gonna have a concept of how much land does it take to do something?
Of course not, absolutely zero.
So, there's, there is, this is a very complex thing.
Well, it's a druid's, to druid's point, that's why you need somebody from Cityscapes or somebody that does all these planning things all the time to, you know, sort of funnel it. Otherwise, you're just gonna be all over the house.
Well, I think...
I don't know, it's a challenge, you're right.
Well, I think, I think if we, number one, if we get the public involved and understanding the issues and much more aware of the issues. I mean, right now, I think there's a bit of a, a lack of communication between council's actions and the general public.
Correct.
And, and I think we need to do a bit of bridging there.
Yeah.
And the more we talk about it, the more we can start to include the, some of the more complex issues. And, and when start, when we start to actually focus on an area to do a development, then we really get in the economic, real economy, you know. You put together a real plan, this, this really can't be, we don't want it to be, we don't want people to think it's a plan.
No.
It's, this is just ideas and what might work in the bigger picture of things.
Yeah.
Because I, I'm thinking from the outside, people are thinking, well, you know, here we're, we're popping a firehouse there. We thought, then we decide, well, we'll just expand it and we'll put the carrying circle or the medical thing there. And then, and we're, we're plunking a, a community hall over here. And, you know, and then, of course, the first thing is that, well, gee, your, your medical stuff, you've got that, you've got the medical center, and then you've got across the street the ambulance service. And then you've got the fire hall people, which is emergency services. And so, all these things are in different areas in the same neighborhood, but why wouldn't you put them all together? And then, I know, it's complex.
Well, yeah, but these things are a little bit of thought of also, you know.
Well, and, and...
But not to the general public don't understand that part of it. And that's a lack of, well, I wouldn't say it's a lack of transparency, it's a lack of communication.
Well, also, Dennis, I look a little bit further, think about mixed use on some of these things. It's more complex, it's a longer time period to make it happen.
Yeah.
But I, it's, it's quicker and easier to sort of say, okay, that's gonna be that. That's gonna be that. As opposed to saying, hey, let's just, let's do, think about this and put this together. Use less land, we've got more to do something else with. We're, we're conserving our resources, community resources. You know, it's these, this kind of discussion we, people need to start thinking about.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree. But it's complex.
But yeah, the Sherret is, it's posed as, we're looking for some input. And we're also, and really, it's, and we're also gonna educate you, because you're gonna go, all go out to your far corners of your little world and hopefully you'll talk about it to other people, so they'll realize that, that it's not just, you know, my idea's the best idea and this is how it should be done. You're stupid because you didn't do it my way, which I never told you anyway. But I think, you know, if, if, yeah, low expect, people need to have low expectations of the Sherret or everyone's gonna be pissed. That you're, you know, this is to try, this is...
That's tricky though, to have low expectations for you.
And have that commitment, yeah.
Day and a half in a, in a, you know, in a day.
Yeah, but if they think that by putting a day in a house that they're gonna get their way and all the people that didn't get invited are gonna even matter because...
Well, there's gonna be new, number of tables addressing the same issue. And I, and I doubt that any two tables will be alike. But there will be some commonalities, and that is, that's what can be extracted.
Absolutely, yeah.
I've only ever seen it done inside businesses who supposedly have all the same angles at the end, and it's very tricky to get.
Consensus.
Well, you never get consensus, but the commonalities are even challenging. And that's when everybody wants, supposedly wants the same thing at the end. So, I, anyway, I, I think it's a great idea, but I do think that it's just needs, and low expectations isn't the right way to phrase it, but...
Yeah, I know what you mean, yeah.
But yeah, throw it out there and see where it goes.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it's a great challenge.
We gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know what? You'll probably find some direction from it.
Oh, I, I think there's no doubt about it. But more people are involved and think about it, the better off we are.
Yes, correct.
Yes, yeah.
Always better off.
Yeah. Not cherry note.
Very revolutionary. Is there any, any wish to communicate anything back to council or to the standing committee regarding any of that?
You don't need anything written, do you?
No, no, they, they're, Joe and I are both, both sitting there.
I'm pleased that you're both through on that.
Yeah.
I went, I just got, I'm a lot of my way right now.
Yeah.
So, um, but I'm, I'm keen to hear of things that are unfolding.
You could come down and walk around too.
Do I have a motion here? David Rynch isn't with us, we can't.
Yeah.
We're gonna be your...
Yeah, that's right. But I can't give you a motion, so somebody else ought to. There you go. Motion by Jer.
Rolling my chair back.
Here we are, Jer.
Unanimously.
So, the next meeting is May twenty-first.
Yes.
And I think I will have...
Is that, is that, isn't that Monday for the holiday weekend?
Is that Monday for the holiday weekend?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it's about the right, wrong time.
Yeah. Uh, May twenty-fourth, thanks, so wouldn't that be the following weekend though?
No, because American one is, is people...